Welcome, everyone. I'll call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting, December the fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, to order. I'll ask Vice Chair, Commissioner Tony Dennis, to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have given us. The blessing of freedom of religion, freedom of the right to assemble, and freedom of speech. May we guard this freedom for the present and future generations. Remember our troops in all the foreign lands and wherever they're serving. It also helps us to keep our freedoms, all these rights. As the former president said, may we reason together here tonight. May we make wise decisions for the good of our county. Amen. Pledge allegiance. Join me in pledge allegiance now, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, could I say something right now? If you notice, Representative Justin Burr's here, and he has something that he would like to present the board, and we'd all go down to the front table, please.
You won't see me for like seven months, so I'm being raw, so I'm getting it in now. But I appreciate you giving me time today. And you probably noticed there's a family here, and I came tonight because I had an opportunity a few weeks ago to present the award to Commissioner McIntyre and at one Commissioner Morton. There's another commissioner that I want to recognize that's, I think, really been a true leader in Stanley County and in our state that has certainly earned the right to stand with many of those folks, including Commissioner McIntyre, Commissioner Morton, Oprah Winfrey, Andy Griffith, Richard Petty, and many others that have received the Order of the Longleaf Pine. And Commissioner Lauder has certainly shown through her hard work and dedication for many years as a business owner in Stanley County and as someone who served on many boards, boards with many of you. I know Commissioner Effer, she served with you on the hospice board and has served. I was had the privilege of nominating her to serve on the North Carolina Community College Board of Trustees, and she's the only person I know of that could actually get a unanimous vote out of the North Carolina House of Representatives when she was elected to the state Community College Board of Trustees. And she's been on many boards, and obviously her and her husband made history being the, I guess, the first two, the only couple to ever both have been elected county commissioners. She's more successful at it than he was.[219.56][219.56](Laughter). But I could think of nobody in Stanley County that's worked harder and more dedicated to this community, to the state, and to her family, and I want to present Commissioner Lauder with the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
(Applause).
(Inaudible). Let's get pictures off, Commissioner. Go ahead, please. See if you got cameras. Wow. (Inaudible).
If I can just say one thing to everybody. I saw my little granddaughter out there, and I was wondering why my whole family was here, and then I was thinking, oh, my gosh, I hope she doesn't start fussing or crying, and I'm the one that cried.[274.02][274.02](Laughter). The first item on this night, tonight's agenda, is the presentation of the county audit.
Excuse me. Adjustments to the amendment?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay.
I'd like to, there was a request for, from Councilman Dexter Townsend to put on a request about that.
I've got that for later.
Is it on here? I don't see it on the agenda.
I've got it under announcements for later, Commissioner Ashito. Okay. You have the agenda before you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The agenda is approved as presented. The first item, the presentation of the county audit for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Our presenter this evening is Kotain Chau Moses from Martin Starnes and Associates. If you'll please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kotain Chau Moses with Martin Starnes and Associates. I am the Audit Manager for the audit of Stanley County. Thank you for allowing our firm to continue serving as your auditor another year. I want to remind you that this is six thirty fourteen's financial statement numbers, and mainly just the general fund that we'll speak about tonight, but we'll hit some highlights on your enterprise funds as well. The status of your audit report to date, I do want to apologize that we do not have the printed bound copies to you yet. We had a holdup in the state giving us numbers this year for your DHHS programs that the county has, which includes Medicaid, WIC, childcare, those numbers. The main holdup was this Medicaid number, and therefore, we cannot issue our opinion on the audit until we had those numbers from the state. However, as of today, five o'clock before, right after I was on the way here, they should have submitted your CAFR to the local government commission. We'd like to thank Toby, Melissa, and the finance staff for helping us through the audit this year again. Every year, I look forward to working with them. They're very knowledgeable and cooperative with all of our audit requests, so I'd like to give them a thank you on that. For the current fiscal year, we issued an unmodified opinion. There were no question costs or findings, and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with your programs. An unmodified opinion means that we found no material misstatements that would lead us to believe that your financial statements were misleading to the readers. It is the best and clean, it is the best opinion that we can give, and it's a clean opinion, and all that means really is that you pass the audit. So this is how the general fund ended at June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. You'll see about a one point seven million dollar increase in the general fund's revenues. Expenditures also had an increase of about eight hundred seventeen thousand dollars, which is just a two percent over prior year. Yeah, I'd like to go over fund balance a little bit. Fund balance serves as the measure of the county's financial resources available. With the standard changes last year, you saw that this equation changed. So what we have now is your assets plus your deferred outflows minus liabilities and minus deferred inflows would equal your fund balance or your net position. A couple of years ago, the standards also changed within your governmental funds, and it changed your classifications of fund balance to five classifications. There's nonspendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances within your governmental funds. These numbers aren't listed, but I'll go over the counties briefly, what your different numbers are for the different classifications. Nonspendable fund balance includes your prepaid items, your prepaid expenditures, and that came in at seventy one thousand dollars. And then we had restricted fund balance of about four point eight million, of which a large portion of that is your stabilization by state statute, and those are your receivables other than property taxes that are not available for you to spend yet. And then, also within restricted fund balance, we have register of deeds, sixty seven thousand dollars, and then we have all others, which is mainly your public safety function, which includes the USDA reserve of thirty thousand dollars. Committed fund balance, there was a total of seven hundred fifty thousand in the general fund at the end of the year. Of that, there's two hundred fifty thousand in culture and rec, and five hundred thousand for education. Now, there's three point three million of assigned fund balances. It includes subsequent years expenditures, which is your fund balance that you appropriated for two thousand and fifteen, and there are various others in several different functions in the general fund. And the unassigned fund balance for the county ended up at ten million one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred and three dollars. So available fund balance is defined by the local government commission as your total fund balance less any nonspendable fund balance, less the stabilization by state statute would total your available fund balance. That is the calculation utilized as the basis for comparing you with other units in calculating your fund balances, fund balance percentages by the local government commission. So how does that look for the county? You have, again, you have total fund balance in the general fund of nineteen thousand, nineteen million one hundred ninety thousand four hundred forty-nine, and the nonspendable fund balance is seventy one thousand three ninety-five. Stabilization by state statute is four point seven million. So your available fund balance is fourteen million three hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-eight. As compared to prior year, there is a decrease in available fund balance. And that could just generally be your, you having more receivables at year end. So your available fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers out, this is as close as we can get calculated to what the LGC calculates for Stanley County. So for two thousand and fourteen, you're at twenty-five percent. The LGC recommends eight percent for a month's worth of expenditures, so this means that Stanley County has a little over three months' worth of fund balance. Again, the total, the total fund balance in the general fund, there was an increase. This is after other financing sources as well, so this is your bottom net income, if you want to call it, or your increase in fund balance, four hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred forty-seven for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. The top three revenues in your general fund, we have adverbal taxes, restricted intergovernmental, sales and services, and then the rest of your revenues make up sixteen percent, and within that category, you have permits and fees, sales taxes, other taxes and licenses, investment earnings, and miscellaneous income. So if we look at adverbal taxes, we see an increase of about one point four million, four point eight percent, and this is mainly due to the implementation of the DMV tax and tag together program. So this is a large increase, and this is just a one-time increase for those that were billed twice within last fiscal year for their motor vehicle taxes. Restricted intergovernmental, in this category, you have grants, federal and state grants lumped in here. We saw a decrease from prior year of about twenty-eight thousand dollars, so it's pretty comparable to prior year. It's a small decrease, but it's still somewhat comparable. Then sales and services, we saw an increase of six point six percent, about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and we saw an increase in health fees, and specifically Medicaid fees. So for the county, the top three expenditures include human services, education, public safety, and then we have other expenditures that make up twenty-five percent. The functions that go into that other expenditures include general government, transportation, environmental protection, economic and fiscal development, culture and rec, and debt service. So the top three expenditures here make up seventy-five percent of the total county expenditures. In human services expenditures, we saw an increase of one point three percent, about two hundred and two thousand dollars. The slight increase is due to home and, home health and senior services operating expenditures. For education, we saw an increase of two point three percent, about two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, and this is due to an increase in the public schools' current expenditures amount. And for public safety, we saw an increase of five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars due to an increase in jail operating expenses and the hiring of three new positions in emergency management. And then your enterprise funds, this is on, these numbers that presented are on accrual basis. So the numbers, for operating expenses that you see here, that does include your depreciation expenses. So for the Greater Bay and Water and Sewer District, we saw a slight decrease in required debt service, an increase in unrestricted net position in both Greater Bay and Piney Point, and your unrestricted net position is kind of like the available fund balance within the general fund. And the total operating expenditures for both funds was an increase, and we saw decreases in total operating expenditures. So for Greater Bay and Water and Sewer, we saw an operating loss of one hundred thirty thousand seven sixty-eight, and then Piney Point had a loss of sixty-eight hundred dollars. This one is your new fund for this year. We have West Stanley wastewater treatment plant. We don't have comparative numbers from prior years since it's a new fund. Your unrestricted net position was a negative sixty-two thousand three hundred eighty-six, and this is not, we do see quite a few enterprise funds that have negative unrestricted net position, and not necessarily an overall negative or deficit net position, but just the unrestricted portion, and this is if your capital assets are more than your cash. It's typically when you see a negative unrestricted net position. So for the year, this fund ended with an operating loss of thirty-seven thousand three sixty-three, and again, that operating expense does include depreciation expense. So for the utility and airport funds, we see increases in the unrestricted net positions, overall operating loss in the utility fund, eight hundred forty-one thousand three nineteen, and overall operating loss in the airport fund of one point eight million. And this, these numbers are before your other financing sources and uses, so if there are any transfers in from the general fund or something, that does not, that's not shown on here. Okay, and I went through these pretty quickly, so if anybody has any questions or want me to go back to a previous slide, I could do that at the moment.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. On the airport or utility funds, you say that operating expenses include depreciation?
Yes.
What kind of depreciation?
Depreciation expense for your capital assets. So are you, total dollars, yes. I can look, let's see, the airport fund, for fiscal year fourteen, the airport fund had one point five million in depreciation expense. The utility fund has seven hundred, seven hundred eighty-one thousand. West Stanley had fourteen thousand, and Piney Point had eighteen thousand, and Greater Bay is two hundred twenty-one thousand five ninety for depreciation expense.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you guys have any other questions, Toby has my contact information, so he can let me know if he, if there's anything else I can answer. And I do apologize again, as I mentioned earlier, the report was submitted today, so we should have a final, well, the local government commission's a little bit behind on their approval process right now because they have all the one hundred counties going to them right now for review, and so it may be about three, four weeks before we can get you, get Melissa CD of the final report to have the hardbound copies for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Sub move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Our next item is a proposal for architectural services for the livestock arena, and our presenter is Ms. Candace Moffett, our Aggregative Center Director. Good evening, Ms. Moffett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come to you this evening. I've come to you with the request to try to move the arena project along. We are at a point now where we are really, really ready to finalize the drawing so we can get some real-life estimates on what this project will cost. You may remember, some of you were on the board last year, June eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. The board at that time committed two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the project, paid out at some point in the, in the future. It was not an appropriation made in that fiscal year or this fiscal year necessarily. At that time, the construction estimate based on educated estimates from the architect and other involved parties was about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We've made great strides in our fundraising efforts to date, in addition to the two hundred and fifty that the board committed. We came to a naming rights decision, as you know, with Farm Bureau for fifty years for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Friends of the Aggregative Center have committed twenty-five thousand dollars. The cattlemen, Stanley County Cattlemen's Association, has committed ten thousand dollars. Convention and Visitors Bureau has committed ten thousand dollars, and other donations from the agricultural community exceed six thousand dollars. That brings us to about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars pledged to date toward an estimated seven hundred fifty thousand dollar project. Included in your board package should have been a proposal from Allen McGuire, the architect we would like to work on, on the project. And I'm coming to you tonight to request that you authorize staff to enter into a contract for the architectural services, to begin the design, building, and construction administration of the livestock arena facility, and to approve the project ordinance and the associated budget amendments for the livestock arena. At this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Does the board have any questions?
Madam Chair, could we make this in one motion? Both of them, we need to have two. Andy, I'll refer to you.
You can make it, yeah, I was gonna say you can make it all in one motion, as long as you stake both items.
Yep.
Okay. Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to enter into the contract for the architectural services with Allen McGuire for design, bidding, and construction administration of the livestock arena facility, and also approve the project ordinance and associated budget amendment for the livestock project.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashito. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Our next item is Commissioner Ashito, who would like to discuss the board's current board committee appointment policy. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we maybe have a discussion about our current, or maybe we should set something up in our appointment policy? Just wanted to feel out, see how you guys feel. I mean, currently, we could pretty much appoint anybody we want, and I'm wondering if we should limit it and not appoint fellow commissioners or their spouses to boards. I mean, it just, there's sixty thousand people in the county to pick from. These are citizen boards that we use for advisory boards, and, you know, doing so just gives a perception that we're taking care of our own, and I just don't think it actually looks good. And I just want to throw it out there and see what anyone else thinks about it.
Commissioners, does anyone wish to make a comment?
Madam Chair, I would make a comment. As far as a sitting commissioner, they are appointed, or we are appointed to boards by the commission, and as a general board member, I don't, I tend to agree that we should not appoint a commissioner to a general board seat, that the population of citizens we do have should be, they're volunteering, so they should be put in those seats. I do not agree that we should restrict it as far as spouses of commissioners because they are citizens, taxpayers, just like anyone else, but I do think the sitting board should not be appointed as a general board member.
I was gonna have a point of clarification. Let's use the community college board as an example. That doesn't necessarily mean a commissioner can't serve on that board. For example, if the government appoints somebody to one of the open seats on the community college board is one thing, it's different, like, in other words, if we were to appoint a person. So it's not saying they can't serve, but just our appointments to, to those.
If the board will allow me to speak, you did say that the boards we appoint to are advisory boards, and that is not always true, Peter. The Board of Trustees at the community college is not an advisory board, and there are others that wouldn't fall into that category either.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner Lawhorn that I would want to restrict it to spouses because we could have somebody that might be a number one candidate for a particular board. I can't think of any right now, but I just don't think we need to do quite that far, but I do agree with not putting a sitting commissioner, but one, on any advisory board.
Any other comments?
I would speak to a different part of the policy. I think there's something we've kind of been remiss since I've been a commissioner, I guess, so it falls on me as much, more than anybody, but as far as our term limits, we've not adhered to that to a great extent, and I think that's another part of that policy we need to really take into consideration, maybe something we need to talk about during our retreat, maybe, just to shore up what we've been doing as far as term limits. Some boards that might not apply to, but I think we need to look at that. But as far as the other, kind of like Tony and Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Lawhorn, that I don't understand the difference in us appointing someone to a board and the governor appointing, so I'm not sure if we can differentiate between that. Thank you.
I'll just add to this that I was curious, so I checked with the county clerk to the board, and I asked her how many applications she actually had on file right now, and she reported there were fifty-nine application with sixty-plus thousand people. That's not very many applications or people who are willing to give their time and to bring their background, their qualifications, and their expertise to serve on the board. I would encourage the public, hopefully they're listening tonight and paying attention to this, and encourage them to come and fill out the form at the county manager's office, or they can fill out the form online also. We need and we want people to volunteer for these positions. We'd love to make appointments, and quite often, when people have served repeated terms when they may, should have expired, it's because we had nothing on file of anyone willing to take their place. And that is part, I believe, of the process, Commissioner McIntyre, that we said we needed information on file. It couldn't just be a name brought up. We had to have some information. Thank you for hearing me out on that. Any other comments?
Just a question, is this something we just want to talk a little bit about at our retreat? Because it sounds like it's more than just the, you know, the appointments, you know, perhaps term limits and perhaps... and encourage them to come and fill out the form at the county manager's office, or they can fill out the form online also. We need and we want people to volunteer for these positions. We'd love to make appointments. And quite often, when people have served repeated terms, when they may, should have expired, it's because we had nothing on file of anyone willing to take their place. And that is part, I believe, of the process, Commissioner McIntyre, that we said we needed information on file. It couldn't just be a name brought up. We had to have some information. Thank you for hearing me out on that. Any other comments?
Just a question. Is this something we just want to talk a little bit about at our retreat? Because it sounds like it's more than just the, you know, the appointments, you know, perhaps term limits and perhaps a few other, few other items. So can I table it till the board retreat?
What's the pleasure of the board, Commissioner McIntyre?
Do we need a motion on it?
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve Commissioner Ashito's, I guess, recommendation here. That doesn't, doesn't necessarily reflect my vote, but I'll make that motion.
I'll second it just to get the discussion.
Would you, is, is, let me understand, is the motion to have discussion on this item during our retreat at some point?
I, I think that, that my motion is to go ahead and vote on this. I think we've had discussion, discussion here tonight on it.
But which item are we gonna be voting on? What Peter said, or what Gene brought up, or?
Peter, Peter mentioned, Commissioner Ashito mentioned the fact of, of not having sitting commissioners serve on boards other, other than the 11 that we already have. So I would make the motion as, as he mentioned it, to not allow commissioners serve on the board, other, other boards.
I believe he included the, or their spouse.
But I don't have, I don't have a problem if he does not include the spouse part on that motion. If you wanted to keep it just out of your heart with the sitting commissioners, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, that, that was what I was, yeah, that's what I, that's what I was getting at was, I'm not sure about the spouses.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion is, I hope I understand it, to prohibit a seated commissioner from being appointed by the Board of Commissioners to a board, committee, or commission.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does that preclude the governor from appointing one of us to a board?
We can't do anything.
Right, okay. I'll make sure.
Question. Madam Chair, is that just one board member or two board members to the same board?
Prohibit a seated commissioner. Our commissioners.
I think that's in addition to any alternates that we have right now. We appoint to these boards, and we have alternate for some of them, and that, it's, it's to keep us from putting another member on one of those boards, or any other board that we don't, that we're already appointed to. Is that correct, Peter? Thank you.
Somebody needs to write that out, what we fixing to do. I'll tell you that right now. We fixing to, don't know what we voted on it. I understand one way.
Commissioner Burleson.
Madam Chair, I would like to withdraw the motion and table it so that we can all sit down and have further discussion on it at the retreat.
Is that a motion to table? Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner McIntyre. All those in favor to table the motion? Say aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
If I can just make a suggestion, perhaps we could have our county attorney come up with the right wording that we could look at, at the, at a retreat, the proper wording for what we're trying to accomplish.
That's certainly fine. We'll, we'll take a look at that. We'll pull out the whole policy in case the board wants to comprehensively look at other items, such as what Mr. McIntyre suggested as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. The next item on our agenda is the appointment to the Economic Development Commission. It is requested that the board appoint a replacement to fill the seat vacated by Joe R. Klutz Jr. in the at-large position. You have several volunteer applications in your packet for your review. Is there any discussion about this? Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a nomination. If you'll look back, I think it's toward the back of our list. Matt Smith with the radio station, we've got all his credentials here. And I think with his connections to the community and folks he's involved with, I think he would be wonderful to serve on the EDC board. And I actually talked to him last week, and I know that he is still willing to serve. So I would like to make that nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson. Does anyone have any other nomination?
Move nominations to be closed and have him declared vacillation.
I'm sorry. I missed that.
Made a motion that the nominations be closed and that he be appointed by acclamation.
We have a motion, nominations closed, and Matt Smith be appointed by acclamation. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. The motion carries. At this time, we're to select a voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference. I'll turn it over to Commissioner, I mean, to County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You all saw a video about the Legislative Goals Conference at your last meeting. This Legislative Goals Conference will occur in Moore County at the Pinehurst Resort, January 15th through the 16th. Typically, the board appoints one individual to represent the county at this Legislative Goals Conference, and so that is the item before you to select a voting delegate for that event. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner McIntyre.
I have served on this in the past, and it is a great experience, and, but I do have a conflict. I have a meeting in Raleigh on the 15th, and you have to be there. That's the first day, so I would not be able to do that. And it would be a great experience for a new person, or for an old person like Tony, or Peter, or anybody else that wants to serve. I meant time-wise, not age-wise, Tony.
Thank you, Commissioner McIntyre.
But I appreciate the consideration.
Would anyone like to volunteer to attend this conference? It is very important.
And that does, it's in Pinehurst. It starts eight o'clock usually in the morning on Thursday, the first day, and then it goes until you finish on Friday. They're usually finished around lunch or early afternoon. And I think they used to do this on Friday and Saturday, didn't they? And they changed it, to keep them staying there, so they could play golf on Saturday. It's a beautiful facility. It's a, it's a good experience, but it's, it's all day long on Thursday, and then, you know, good part of the day on Friday.
Madam Chair, I know that Commissioner Lawhorn and Commissioner Eford and I, I believe, are gonna be in Winston-Salem the week before. So we're gonna be out two days. So I wouldn't necessarily want to be gone to Thursday and Friday, back-to-back, so I, I would maybe like to see you attend if you'd be willing.
I'm gonna be gone with you that week, too.
I did not realize that.
Okay, since I'm the last commissioner standing, I guess I'll go. I do have a senior service meeting that day. I hate to beat that, but I'll, I'll go.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashito. Our, our next item is our annual strategic planning retreat, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lucas again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the last six years, the boards have a local one-day retreat to discuss the current year and set priorities for the next fiscal year. It's recommended that you hold that retreat again this year. I believe it's been valuable in the past, and based on the feedback I've gotten from prior boards, you've, you've all appreciated the opportunity to get together and put things on the table and have some good, good candid discussion about ways and strategies to move the county forward in the next year and, year and beyond. And so we typically do that in mid-February. I know that there may be a conflict for you, so I put two dates out there, the 13th and the 20th. And so hopefully, we can do one of those dates. If neither worked, then we can look at pushing it back till the 27th. The further we push it back, it just, it pushes on our budget schedule for our departments, because we like to have this information so that we can give good direction to our departments in terms of developing their budget requests. But certainly, if we need to move it back to the end of February, there's some flexibility there. And so, and we've, we've had a, we've had a facilitator the last two years, and I believe it's been helpful. We've also done it without facilitators, and we certainly can, staff can certainly take that responsibility on if the board feels we don't need a facilitator. But it's been helpful in the past, and I think, given the makeup of the new board, it would be helpful, again, to have, have a facilitator to, to, to help us work through, or help you all work through items on that day. So just asking you to consider holding that one-day retreat. We typically hold it at the airport, but we're open to other areas. We've already reserved the dates at the airport, so if we decide to move it, we can, we can, but that it's available. And we can, and then obviously, consider the need for a facilitator and then approve a date. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. If we have a facilitator, what would be the cost?
The last couple of years, it's run in the $1,000 to $1,500 range.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is probably one of the most important things we do during the year. I think we need to do it again. I think having a facilitator takes a lot of pressure off of Andy to keep us whipped in line. A facilitator can do that much better. Not better, but it takes the pressure off of him and staff to do that. And so I think I'm in favor of doing a facilitator, having it the 13th works better for me while I'm talking, so it would be a better date for me to do the 13th. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner McIntyre. A facilitator is very, very much needed, and I could do it either date. Did that make any difference to me?
Commissioner Lawhorn?
Madam Chair, either date's fine with me, and I do agree, we do need a facilitator.
Commissioner Ashito?
I can't do the 13th. That's Myrtle Beach Marathon weekend, and we got like 200 people going down there from Stanley County, so.
Commissioner.
I can probably make it work.
Yeah, the 20th, okay with me. I couldn't think of a better date than Friday to 13th to get together with all y'all, but, yeah. 13th, I mean, the 20th's fine with me, and I, and I think a facilitator is very important.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with either date, and I would, I guess, defer to Commissioner McIntyre and Dennis, but it sounds like probably a facilitator may be necessary.
I cannot attend on the 20th, so the 13th is fine with me. And a facilitator, if that's the census of the board, I'm fine with it.
You and Peter go ahead and fight that one out.
How about the first Friday of, of February? I think it's something, it sounds like we really need to get on it.
The 6th?
Sounds good to me, as far as I know. I don't know for any reason.
Okay.
Might work better for me.
Okay. So it'll be February the 6th with a facilitator and the airport. Is everyone okay with that?
I'll make that motion.
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion that we hold it on February 6th at the airport with a facilitator, starting time nine. What did we just start? Nine o'clock.
Is the airport available?
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Dennis.
Is Becky not on speed dial?
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion carries.
We need to amend that, that in case it's, the motion to say if it's available.
We can find some other facilities if we need to. That will be fine. We'll keep it in Stanley County, that's for sure.
Okay, just make the board aware if we move. Yes. Okay, it's time for public comment. Would anybody like to come forward and address the board? Oh, I'm sorry. Consent agenda, excuse me.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Now, public comment. Would anybody like to come forward? Seeing none. I'll start to my left.
Well, I would just like to say, congratulations, Madam Chair, on the Order of Longleaf Pine, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas, fellow board members and staff. That's all.
Congratulations, Madam Chair, and also a Merry Christmas to everyone listening tonight and tomorrow night. Thank you.
Congratulations, Madam Chair. It's a real distinct honor. Representative Burr, it's always a pleasure to see you again, sir. And I also, too, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Ashito?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, congratulations on the award. And just three quick things. One is, you know, I had my workday with Tim Schweringer in the planning, well, the zoning department there, and it was rather interesting. One thing that stood out is, you know, I know that the sheriff's department and the deputies, those guys go out in harm's way, but, you know, a lot of these workdays, and one thing that surprised me is how a lot of our employees go out in potentially dangerous situations. I know the last one we did was at a mobile home that was up for demolishing. It was kind of set back by itself with another mobile home. Nobody was at either mobile home. And the mobile home was in terrible condition, and they had, for a wall, they pretty much had just that plastic from Lowe's on there. And, you know, it was kind of like Cujo. You know, dogs are coming out of that trailer, and Tim, we, we had to go in it, so you don't know what's going inside, what's, what's in there and stuff, forcing the dog, and they were like big German Shepherds and stuff. And that's not the only time I've been with people that, you know, that, working with some of the folks where they go into potentially harm's way. That's something, so we appreciate what the employees do. There was an interesting column in the Montgomery Herald about open government and stuff by Tammy Dunn. And I just thought it was, you know, one thing we could do to make sure we stay as open as possible is when we come out a closed session, I think it's good that maybe we come back to our seats to close the meeting, especially if we have something to vote on. So I know that last week, with the last meeting when we voted on the sheriff, you know, we, we voted on it right there. There was just a motion, you know, and then voted on without coming up. And, you know, we do have some folks here, usually the presses here, and also the, the televisions usually here, just to have a more professionally way to end the meeting. Just a suggestion, and then, actually, just two, two tonight. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, again, congratulations on your award. And Representative Burr, we appreciate you being here and what you do for our district. Today, I was in attendance in the Alamo Downtown Development Corporation as the commissioner assigned to that particular seat. Wanted to share a little bit of information that took place there. There were 386 hours totaling $8,121 in kind labor for the month of December for the ADDC. Shannon, the director, made 21 downtown business visits, five community civic meetings, Victoria, 10 downtown visits, four community civic meetings. And their annual retreat will be on January the 12th. Wanted to mention what's going on there. Back in October, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting that was entitled the North Carolina Rural Assembly. And I know our county manager and our EDC director were also there in attendance, and so was Commissioner Burleson. And I appreciate you all attending, but one of the speakers said a couple of things that I think all of us, as citizens of Stanley County, need to be aware of. But one of the speakers said a couple of things that I think all of us, as citizens of Stanley County, need to be aware of. Eighty-five of the hundred counties in, in the state of North Carolina are considered rural counties. Of that eighty-five, thirty-one are in metro areas. And I guess Stanley County would be considered a met, in a metro area because of our proximity to Mecklenburg County. Another interesting fact that they stated, it says, "Four-lane highways equal growth of population and businesses." And you all realize, we do not have a four-lane highway that goes throughout Stanley County. And thanks to Representative Burr for working to try to get that back on the plan to get us four-lane highway, twenty-four, twenty-seven, all the way through the county. And hopefully, it will be all the way to two-twenty, which is, is also a four-lane there in Anson. I mean, not Anson, but Montgomery County. The last thing I want to point out is, they said, "Growth is dependent on our citizens." It's not on the state of North Carolina. It's not on the regional partnership. And it's not on the federal government. It's dependent upon our citizens. And it says, "Our county needs to push out news about our county to news medias because we need to be the one to toot our horn." And that's what I think we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I would like to congratulate you. Madam Chair, I would like to congratulate you on your reward, award tonight. You're graciously honored by it and I'm proud of you. And Representative Burr, we're proud of you to be here every time we see you. And I, I hope the good Lord forgives me telling a little white lie when I was doing that for you to get it up first. But he'll forgive me, I think, on this one. But going along with what Bill just said, got an email from Andy this morning. I do want to be proud of and I like, I don't know if Representative Burr knows or not, but Stanley County will be the first county in the state of North Carolina to have its EMS, fire, and law enforcement officers trained in mental health first aid. Monarch is doing the training now and our EMS had its training today and it'll continue on. So we are first in something, Representative. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The first thing is, I want to announce that we have the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast Saturday, January the seventeenth, at the E.E. Waddell Center, beginning at eight a.m. The keynote speaker will be Lieutenant Orlando Lilly with the Baltimore County Police Department. Invitation's extended from Dexter Townsend. And please let the clerk know if you would like to attend. The next thing is I'm proud and honored to have Representative Justin Burr with us tonight. Not just because he brought me the award. And please express my gratitude also to the governor. Come back and visit us anytime. Bring money, anything you can. We'll always open the door for you. Thank you. At this time.
Um, quick, quick question. On the Martin Luther King request.
Yes.
Dexter Townsend also asked for the, if the commissioners can designate a representative to bring greetings to the program on the event. So I'm, I've been the last two years. I plan on going this year, so I'll, and I'll be glad to do that. Unless somebody else wants to do it, then that's fine with me.
If no one else wants to, that's fine. Would anybody else? Okay, okay. Commissioner Shudo will make the address. Okay, we're going to recess our regular meeting now. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, we're going to recess the regular meeting. We're going to go into closed session to discuss a real estate transaction in accordance with GS 143-318.11A5.
I'll make a motion to recess and to go into closed session for those numbers you just said.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. We're in closed session.